Call the meeting in order. Ms. Sheevy, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with every due justice.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the robe, please.
Sheevy?
Here.
Breckus?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
George?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Kishel?
Here.
Public comment, Donna Clontz.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Council. I'm Donna Clontz. I live in Reno. I am Chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Board and also Chair of Northwest Neighborhood Advisory Board. And today I have a couple of things that I'd like to say in public comment. One, again, to thank you all. I've talked to most of you about the needs of seniors. And I understand that in the budget process, people are working on ways to continue to support the Senior Citizen Advisory Board. So I appreciate that and thank you. I know that it's, there are tough times and you're all searching for ways to find funds to continue good programs and stronger support for the needs of the citizens of Reno. So, thank you for that. Second, as Chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Board in Northwest, part of the budget issues that are before you today involve the Community Pride Grant money that's gone to Neighborhood Advisory Boards for several years. This year, or last year, the total was over $200,000. And I know there's a proposal and a recommendation that the Council take those funds from the NABs and use them in other ways throughout the city. And as Chair of my NAB, this whole recommendation and in addition, disbanding the NABs, has come about so fast, in the middle of April, that most of the NABs haven't had a chance to even discuss it formally because we're open meeting, just as you are, and have to do notice and those kinds of things. So, my own Neighborhood Advisory Board wasn't even able to discuss what is going on at our last meeting because it came several days before our last meeting. But we are meeting on Thursday and we're set to talk about the proposal to disband the NABs and restructure everything and the budget issue. So I'm speaking as a person who's been involved, who's a current leader of one of your NABs. And I've sent emails to you as well, asking you to consider pending the disbanding of the NABs for the time period that it's going to take all of us to really participate in some citizen engagement. All of us who've been formally involved as NAB members and leaders, but also the citizens who have used many ways to communicate with you as the City Council. A lot of us have ideas that go along with some of the new ideas that are there in that staff report, which looked at the whole Neighborhood Advisory Board situation. And granted, there have been issues with attendance and so on. But that is not the main measure of a better way to get really good citizen input on the programs and the needs of the community here in Reno and to support your own agendas and priorities. So, it was on the Council agenda last meeting. It's been postponed to the 22nd meeting. And I'm asking you to postpone it even further so that the NABs can, at least the reorganization piece of it. I know you have to deal with the budget situation now. And personally, speaking for myself, I think that the recommendations that are before you on how that CPG money can be used would work fine. We care about graffiti. We care about the other things that you're going to use it for. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment, cards, I'll bring it back to the table. Approval of the agenda? Have motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. And B, budget presentations. Mr. City Manager, Ms.?
Good morning, Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the Council. For the record, I'm Kate Thomas with the Office of Management and Budget, here today to give you your final Council budget workshop as we head into the final stages of the budget approval for fiscal year 13-14. The way that today will work is essentially, what we'd like to do is go over the final ideas or concepts that you wanted us to bring forward from the last budget meeting for some clarification. We'll walk through some of the items that you had requested, as well as asking for some direction on some resolution language that was requested. And that has been agendized separately because it is different than the whole process that we're looking to do as far as setting the budget numbers. But what we would like to do then finally is go into open discussion with the Council on how you'd like to see any changes to the proposed budget as we prepare the final document for adoption on the 21st. We'll start off with refocusing everybody on the priorities that the Council set forth in February for the city to follow. And we're really trying to rally around these concepts as we put forth a budget for you this year. And then, of course, via strategic planning and then into the budget planning for fiscal 15, you'll see even more alignment around the priorities that the Council set forth as our strategic objectives. I put this slide back up here because the last time that we tried to show this, we were having technical difficulties. So I wanted to just show you a really quick snapshot of how the full-time equivalents have proceeded over history and where we are this year and where we propose to be next year as far as positions for the city of Reno. You can see how we have certainly declined and are doing a lot with a lot less individuals to help us do what are the core services that the city provides. And so this does include for 13-14, the addition in Council's direction of the three graffiti positions, as well as the reduction of the one court position that we talked about last meeting and taking a part-time employee and bringing them full-time in Human Resources. This is again, the budget overview for everyone that is tuning in this time to see the total Reno budget, including the general fund, which is of course, the large portion there that you see on the right-hand side of our $347 million budget. Thank you, Councilmember George. I fixed the slide from last time so that you can see the changes more clearly as you see that most of the departments are seeing reductions. The ones that are not, have various reasons for that. In most cases, it could be an alignment issue, healthcare costs, things of that nature. But what you see here is the snapshot of how the 13-year looks to round out, as well as how the 14-year looks to come in for the budgeting purposes for the department-by-department view. Some of the things that you won't be seeing today, that'll be coming back to you however, at a future meeting, just from a timing perspective. Council at the last meeting had proposed to work forward a process to eliminate the CPI increases for the future Council. And because of the timing necessary to put together that language and quite frankly, what we needed to get done today, we're going to be bringing that forward to you in a June meeting. And it won't affect this, you know, current coming fiscal year anyway. So, we felt that that was okay from a timing perspective. As well as when we tried to put together some history for you on Sky Tavern and funding, it would have really largely taken over this presentation because there is such a rich history and funding component. So we're going to be bringing that forward. I noticed there's a July 10 staff report giving Council some information. So we're just going to beef up the history in that piece so that you can have a better historical perspective on how that product has progressed over time. So that being said, we'll jump into some of the items that Council did wish to see during this workshop. The first of those touches on the fee schedule, which you've been provided in your packet. So you have the fee schedule. You were given that schedule in the big binder that you received prior to the meeting on the 6th. And what we're doing here really for you is calling out, because we didn't touch on it at the meeting on the 6th, is calling out some of the changes that you'll see in the fee schedule, just for transparency's sake, so that you can see sort of the things that are shifting. There are not a lot of changes. We don't have CPI increases in a lot of cases, or in any cases that I'm aware of. But we do have some business license fees that have changed. And you can see the reasons for those up here. We have a new service in the municipal court around the traffic school. And then in Parks and Recreation, we have some of the fees that have been adjusted. For instance, we have the new golf carts that are going to be offered as a service at Rosewood Lake. So there's a, I believe it's a $2 increase in a cart rental fee and things of that nature that you've seen in the fee schedule. I'll go to the last page of the fee schedule highlights. And then if Council has some questions, we can certainly go through them. We have the community development building supplemental fees that did, there were some new fees that we saw there. And I wanted to point out though, in the document that you received prior to the meeting on the 6th, we went through, for those of you who have paid attention to the fee schedule in the past, and completely reformatted, thank you Jamie for your help on that, the fee schedule, which was a culmination of all the different departments' fees into one document. So we put that into a very readable format. As such, some of the lines that you saw on your printed document were not visible. So, we restructure that a little bit and we're calling out some of those items for you. But if you see some on the new fee schedule that you'll be provided, that is why. We're certainly not trying to hide any fees. We just went through kind of a technical difficulty as far as the formatting was concerned. So if you have questions on the fees or the fee schedule, we can certainly answer those at this time. It's up to the Council's desire. Otherwise, we can move on. Previously asked at the meeting was some information on the debt schedule and where we stand with the city's overall debt and the performance. What I did, rather than putting that up here in very small font on, you know, 20 different slides, was provide that for the Council and then also the public has a copy of the city's overall debt schedule. We have currently outstanding GO, or General Obligation Bonds, to the tune of $144 million. And then you can see that we've got revenue and special assessment district bonds as well. And those are outstanding as of June 30th, 2012. And the document that you have reflects the information that's up on the screen. Additionally requested was the fact that the City Council does approve all of the fund policies for the city. Those are provided to you in kind of a thicker packet. I wanted to point out that of all the policies that you see up here, we will be in what we call the off-season, so essentially July, going through comprehensively the fund policies that you see now, proposing to Council some changes or adjustments that we feel necessary, getting those in really good working order. Some of them haven't been touched in years and years. And actually making them available online for everybody to see on the city's website, as well as internally. So that there's a really good catalog or depiction of where we stand with our fund policies. You had requested to see the use of critical labor. We have three positions at the city right now that are filling that need for critical labor shortage. And they have been approved by Council. We have, in my department, the senior management analyst position that's temporarily filling a vacancy that we had to get us through the budget cycle and to get some of our newer staff members trained up to speed. The additional savings that you see to the right is the fact that during the usage of these positions, unlike full-time positions that are salaried, we do not pay for vacation time. And so we've got some scheduled vacation time that we're indicating up here will not be covered by the city payroll portion, which does include some savings for us. So we wanted to give you a full picture of how that works out. So you can see that the cost of a critical labor position and the cost of a full-time position actually realizes some savings for us. So as long as they're used strategically, I think that the city sees some benefits in the cases where we have them. And this is based on a full fiscal year. We had wished to be reviewing a severance two-year history. And the next slide that you're going to see is a cash-out history. So the difference between a severance and a cash-out is that this is showing the folks that have separated from service in the last two fiscal years. So let's say we had somebody retire. At the time of retirement, they get a payout, if you will. And that is what this slide is depicting. The slide that I'll show you next shows that during the year, in certain bargaining contracts, employees have the ability to come forward to their department heads and can request a cash-out of up to a certain amount of overtime or vacation time or things of that nature. So right here, you can see that over the two fiscal years through April 30th of the current fiscal year that we're in right now, we're seeing a total of about $1.5 million in severance. And of course, this is unbudgeted. So this is something that we have to ebb and flow with as part of the budget process. And, you know, we can't oftentimes plan when people are retiring and nor have we had the ability to budget for these adequately because of the lean fiscal times that we've been in. And so you can see average, we're looking at about $12,000 per employee. And of course, that varies greatly depending on whether you're in public safety or you have large leave balances or things of that nature. But this does include vacation and accrued sick leave, things of that nature when they're at the end of their employment versus the cash-outs, which again, I mentioned, for about $1 million over the two fiscal years, people can come forward and request to be paid for comp time and callback and things of that nature per their bargaining agreements. Actually, sorry. That's $1 million each year. You had requested a U. City Council overview. There's not a lot specific to just the U. City Council. But in the 13-14 recommended managers' budget, you see that there are $460 in supplies, about $6,500 in community projects, for a total of almost $7,000 for U. City Council. And in senior services funding, wanted to clear the air here on this one. Previously, for the money that was spoke of during the last budget workshop, we had some folks come forward and say, "Oh, you're cutting seniors by 20, you know, almost $30,000." And it appeared that way because in a previous practice, the budgeting for that number was included in Council non-city programs. And then when the budget was approved, it was then transferred to seniors. So you wouldn't have seen it in the document. But what we're going to be doing in the future is just budgeting it directly into Parks and Rec so that you can see right where it is and where it belongs. It was, that's just one of those alignment and cleanup issues that we've had. So the real reduction in the recommended budget to the seniors right now is the $11,859, which was reduced as part of the recommended reduction in supplies and services from the Parks and Recreation Director when we went forward and said to all the departments, "Look, we need to get another $500,000 of additional savings in services and supplies." And this was a component of that overall reductions for Parks and Rec that came forward. There were some question last time about whether or not the move of the Community Resources Program Manager to the general fund would have an impact because of Sparks and Washoe County funding the home consortium. And we verified that they do not contribute funding to the home consortium. So we don't see any issue with moving forward on putting the Community Resources Program Manager into the general fund. That's in the Community Development Department. We had some questions last time about traffic calming. And that was part of the CIP program. Here's a little bit of history for you. It began in 1993. We've had a number of installations that have completed. And we have a visual here for you of a speed hump. This is in the Hood and Maddox area, I believe. But it shows you kind of how those traffic calming history or the traffic calming CIP projects have been allocated. And then the vehicle replacement, as you're aware, we have recommended freezing vehicle replacement for the fiscal year 14 to the tune of about $870,000 in savings to the general fund. The major component of that $870,000 will be 18 police vehicles, of which six are patrol, six are sedan, and six are light truck. And then the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Departments sees a freeze of seven vehicles, which includes four pickups, two sedans, and one light truck. And then Public Works would see one vehicle, a light truck, that would be frozen in 14. We'll go over really quick some of the business license fees that the Council had recommended seeing or having questions regarding. So you can see that the business license fees, subject to Section 354 of NRS, were calculated as a percentage of gross receipt. And then there are some that are calculated at a flat or fixed rate. And we've got more information for you if you need it on that. We've got staff here available to answer questions. But we see the 5% fee increase for the alcohol-related licenses that Council approved and when those go into effect. And then we see the future increases that are also based on the Consumer Price Index. We have the new tobacco paraphernalia retailer's license, which went into effect on April 1st of this year, and that's $135 a quarter. And then finally, we have the new alcohol application processing fee, which is two times the annual cost of the alcohol license. And so for example, packaged liquor would be $3,800 versus $457. So we saw an increase that Council approved for that. And that's reflected in the business license fees, portion of the fee schedule that you were provided. I wanted to talk a little bit about the support for the arts. And there were some questions around what the, so I brought this slide back from the original workshop that we saw in April. And so this shows that the recommended reduction in funding for fiscal year 13-14 to the Pioneer Center and to Art Town. And then we just wanted to reflect that Christine Fay had come up to the dais and reminded you all that Art Town was funded at the $125,000 level for the fiscal years 10, 11, 12, and 13. And then you had some questions last meeting around the Council compensation and the automatic salary. This is aside from the automatic CPI resolution that the Council seeks to have reduced or eliminated in the future. But this is talking about the Council's salary impurs increases that would take effect July 1, upon approval of the budget. So this shows you this total increase amount of the salary impurs increase that are automatic, that this Council didn't vote on, but they just occur as naturally part of your positions that you're in. Sorry, that doesn't include the mayor should not have been up there. That's from an old slide. Right now, I wanted to talk a little bit about the other item that was on the agenda, or we could table it. But this was the, in red you see up here, the proposed language for the budget resolutions regarding the agreement with Nevada Land and SK Baseball. This was referencing the fact that there was a component in both the redevelopment agency and the city's general fund that are related to the baseball agreement. And I think it was Councilwoman Breckus at last time had indicated that she wanted to see some language for the resolutions. And so this is the proposed language up here that would go in both of the resolutions to adopt the city's budget, as well as the redevelopment agencies. And then I'd like to bring up Police Chief Pitts to talk a little bit about his request at last meeting about the cops grant and his proposal to bring forward a request to Council regarding that grant process.
Thank you, Kate. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. Honorable Mayor and Council, at the last budget workshop, we discussed briefly in concept the work that we're doing with the Sheriff's Department, the Sparks Police Department, and the School District on applying for police positions within the next cops grant, which is due at the end of this month. And what you directed me in that workshop was to come back with some general information about really what is the hypothesis or the concept. And I'll explain that here and then we'll get into the numbers. The idea, we took the Community Action Officer Program that this Council approved in 2010, those 10 police positions from a cops hiring grant. And we implemented that in the Reno Police Department, our community. And we've seen a significant impact on calls for service, crime, and really neighborhood problems as far as us reducing those and improving the quality of life for people that live in those neighborhoods where the CAO team has worked. What we're doing now is really our concept or hypothesis in this grant is to take the Community Action Officer concept, work with the School District, and we've identified schools at risk, in this case, elementary schools, in different neighborhoods, ours, the Sheriff's Jurisdiction, and the Sparks Police Department, and apply for police positions to work very closely with the School District in those neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods are basically spheres of influence. We have calls for service, crime, violent crime, and neighborhood problems that impact obviously the lives of those people that are going to, obviously, the students going to those elementary schools and the faculty working there. And that's basically the recommendation. When you look at the numbers, really, the language says that they'll fund, you know, 75% of those positions, but really, it's only $125,000 for each position for three years. So when you do the basic math, the second bullet, the financial impact for one police position is roughly, we're paying about $92,000 annually for one police officer position. The savings for us would be about $42,000 a year. The equipment costs associated with officers, really over the last three or four years, is about $10,000 per officer. That's to equip them, get them to the academy, and get them onto the street. That funding can come out of asset forfeiture. We've used that for the last three or four years with Council's approval and obviously federal oversight. And really, what we've done with the cops grants over the last decade, when we hire police officers, is we build a projection. I've talked with Mr. Klinger about this in detail. We'll project, if it's three plus one, we'll project out that four years. If it's three years and there's a turnover, we'll project, using attrition and other savings, to cover those positions at the end of those three years. In this case, the second, or third bullet, is the numbers associated with hiring five police officers. With your recommendations, we can apply for this grant and ask for five police positions. And you see that's about $460,000 a year, roughly about 1.3 over those three years. And again, we say $42,000 a year for each position, a total each year of $210,630,000 over three years. And then, of course, $50,000 to equip them, which we can cover in our budget. And then we would continue to absorb those positions. And I want to, Ms. Breckus asked a question last time. You were right on point, ma'am. I mean, we don't want to end up in a situation where we can't retain those officers. And I would just remind the Council that in 2010, I asked for your permission to hire 10 police officers on a cops grant. And those officers have already been transitioned into the budget effectively just over the last three years. So I'll take any questions relevant to the cops grant, please.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the cops grant, you have two alternatives in bullet two and three, as if we request one position or if we request five positions?
I was just placing it in the context.
Okay.
And I feel very comfortable working with my staff and O and B that on the third bullet, that second sub-bullet, when you talk about the savings, I feel comfortable that I could handle about $210, maybe $2.5 a year as far as from my general fund, to make sure those positions are covered and then make sure in three years that those positions are absorbed effectively in the organization.
I guess, you know, to pursue this line of thinking, I don't know if you're asking to, you know, kind of do it right now through this budget adoption. I'd like to see the grant announcement myself and maybe a summary, a little fleshing out more, you know, what they do at the schools. Are they going to be in all city schools? I mean, obviously, they're not going to be out in the county schools, within the unincorporated county, right?
Well, what the recommendation was, and let me revisit some comments at Council about a month ago, is the cops office called us, Ms. Breckus, and said, "Hey, we're going to be, you know, visiting the West Coast. We want to come into Reno." We've been big players with the cops office over the last couple of decades. And they came into town. And we set up a workshop with the Sheriff's Department, Sparks PD and Reno PD attended, and the School District. And we started discussing options for grant funding. And the cops hiring program was discussed then. We presented this suggestion, which was, why don't, let's say, local law enforcement in the sense of Sparks PD and Reno PD, right? When we identify these at-risk schools in our jurisdiction, ma'am, in the Sheriff's Jurisdiction and in Sparks's jurisdiction, what we'll build is we'll build a model using community action to work in and around those schools that are at risk to reduce violence, crime, and calls for service in those neighborhoods. So that's generally the idea.
Okay. So it's not, it's our idea, it's not a new grant program that they have?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I guess, you know, another thing is, because next year, we're going to be faced with what to do with the 64, I think it's 64, 64 firefighters who we have on the federal money phasing out. And that, you know, boy, I don't know how we're going to do that. I'd like to see overall, within your budget, how much federal money we have in there. You know, I don't have a lot of faith in the federal government right now. And I get very anxious about our dependency on them. We're seeing CDBG cut. So, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing that and that fleshed out a little bit more. And then, you know, I've written federal grants. I know a lot of, they're big on partnerships. So we probably need like a resolution from the School District or the, you know, I like that participatory approach. So, you know, I guess, those are my thoughts. Oh, one last thought is, in reviewing the fund policies over the weekend that were given to us, I see that on an annual basis, you're to bring, or I don't know if it's the chief or the manager or the finance director, but a outline of how the forfeiture budget's going to be used over the course of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was just wondering, when we see that, do we see that with the adoption of the budget? Or how's that fleshed out?
We have not traditionally done that with the adoption of the budget. We're responsible quarterly, ma'am, to report that information to the federal government. And so we have been doing this for years with asset forfeiture is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Yes. We can get you that. Absolutely.
Because I think that, you know, the fund policy says that we're supposed to get it. And I see that the graffiti positions are being funded through half-fiscal year, through the forfeiture? And then they get absorbed into the general budget? So, anyway, is that, that'd be good to see. Because that's the money that you would use to balance this cops thing, that grant?
Well, we would use the asset forfeiture for the logistical, equipment, uniforms, things like that. things like that. We wouldn't use it for salaries.
Okay.
But I just want to, I want to reiterate to the council that, that in the last three years, the police department has gone into the fourth quarter at about 2% under budget.
Uh-huh.
That's a million dollars in the fourth quarter.
Yeah.
We've absorbed positions like this and two or three other grants prior to requesting this one very effectively. As the manager knows, I've talked to him about how we do that if it's over three or four years. And the other thing that is actually in this grant is a request, or actually language that says that at the end of the grant, if you can't come up with a match, you'll be considered for waiver, so it's waived. We're not going to run it fiscally like that. We'll run it over those three or four years and make sure we're solid so those five cops or how many cops we hire off of it still have jobs at the end of that grant cycle.
Yeah. I mean, your absorption capacity is a lot greater than, say, 64 in the fire department.
Absolutely.
And I understand, you know, trying to rebuild the force and it's, even though, you know, DC, Washington funding and Washington seems dysfunctional, you know, we need to keep our eye on that money. But, anyway, I'd like to see the bigger picture of how much federal money we have in that department.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I am familiar with the Community Action Officer Program, which is incredibly successful, by the way.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that program. So with this, this scope of incorporating the schools, this would just be an additional responsibility that they would roll into their program already, correct?
Yes, these five positions will be moved, Mrs. Giordano, into community action with an emphasis on school safety and neighborhoods in and around those schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Sir?
Chief.
Chief Pitts, I think it's a great project, especially some of the schools, inner-city schools, working more closely with the community. They get to see you guys foot cops, you know, right around the community. Is there a deadline on this grant now? What's, what are we looking?
We're working, we've set a joint meeting every Monday to work through this. We've written the narrative. Reno PD wrote the narrative because, of course, community action was our program. We've shared it with all of our partners. Mrs. Bruckus is right on point. We have more than just law enforcement and school district partners, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I don't want to bore you with all that. But we'd like to apply for this grant. I believe it's the 22nd, Bridget? Yeah, the 22nd of May. We have a meeting this afternoon at 1:00, and we're kind of wrapping up the narrative and obviously just the formatting that's required in the grant, sir. So it would be nice for you to allow us to continue to apply for that grant.
And you'd be looking for direction from us today or is it next?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that question.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I see no reason we wouldn't.
Yeah. Neither do I. I see that we absolutely support the chief on this.
Any other questions, anything? Thanks a lot, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kate.
So to frame up the discussion on the COPS grant, the permission to move forward on the seeking of the grant is what happens today. The impacts that we would see to the city's potentially impacts, the general fund wouldn't occur to fiscal year 15 is my understanding. So I think, you know, we don't have to worry about those impacts for this budget that we're considering today. And with that, those were the items that the council had requested that we bring forward based on the May 6 meeting to today. I would like to bring up the slide that the mayor so kindly last time asked that I revisit, so I'll put this back up to show where we are as far as our goals for reserve levels and where we'd like to be and the status on those. Just, you've seen this, we talk about fund balance and how we're under goal on that as well as our funding of the other post-employment benefits or OPEB, as well as budget stabilization, deferred maintenance, and workers' comp. So we have a ways to go. We're making great strides in getting there, and we appreciate the council's and the city manager's support on getting there. But with that, we can transition into any questions that the council may have or direction that we need on the fiscal '14 budget.
Hillary, we had, at the last meeting, we talked about the U.S. City Council, and they brought that up as a special slide, and you weren't here. So now that we kind of have the figures and stuff, we just wanted to get your input and what your thoughts are on that program.
Honestly, right now, it, I think also going into summer, you have a lot of kids that just frankly don't seem that interested in continuing with that. Personally, I think, I think it's very, it can be very good. However, I think right now, it's not one of our top priorities as far as some of these boards and commissions that we have. Can I ask you, so we are cutting seniors $11,000, is that correct?
Yeah, the current proposal was the reduction of senior services and supplies and the items that we showed you from the budget. But that was the only cut to seniors currently on the table.
And so that really concerns me. I would much rather see if we could divert the U.S. City Council to seniors. Roll it over into that. What's your guys' thoughts?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think we certainly need to rely on the council person who represents that activity. And I'm certain she's given it an awful lot of thought. So I would certainly support her recommendation. And I guess I would add to that, that the school system itself, over the last several years, I think has done an improved job in the academia of public and administrative, you know, through the executive branch all the way down, teaching the students and having the requirements for hours that didn't exist when at least I was in school. So I think they're doing a better job at giving them the experiences that we were attempting to give with the youth council.
And I've done some research on a few of the schools contacting the government departments, and a lot of them have said that they're already attending a lot of our city council meetings, which I don't know if you guys have noticed, but there's actually quite a bit of young people that are coming in and observing. And so that was, I think, another reason why there wasn't this huge support, because they have picked up so much.
Exactly.
And so, so I truly feel that, I absolutely think that that's, you know, they're here, they're participating, and I think that more than anything is they're going to learn much more by being in here.
Yeah. I know I've had conversation with some of them who've attended these meetings or who will contact me and ask to, you know, be able to spend three or four hours a week for a couple of weeks, like a mini internship to fulfill their requirements at their school. And when I ask them if they've been involved in or would like to become involved in the youth council, they say, no, no, this is exactly where I'm going. They've got their agendas already set up, and they've got so many other extracurricular activities that they're involved in and have to be involved in if they're particularly going for scholarships. They have to show a huge array.
Yeah.
And I just don't think that they're ready to make the commitment for a U.S. City Council, but they love the eight or nine or 12 hours that they put in otherwise.
Agreed.
Well, Ms. Sheeby, you want to give me a motion?
I have motion to disband.
Disband, but what do you want to do with the money?
Well, with the money, I would like to see it roll over to seniors.
I have a motion and second on that. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney Office. The actual disbandment would have to be on another agenda. There are RMC implications and bylaw implications, so there would be a process that we would go through to prepare those documentation for you.
Okay.
So, okay, then let's just make a motion to roll over the budget for that.
Motion second, all in favor. Discussion.
You know, by way of discussion, I'd like to bring up a broader point about some of the funds that we have in, you know, more or less, it appears that the city council contingency fund is getting swept. And I, you know, there was $100,000, and I'm reading in the fund policies, the room tax that it's called the city council contingency budget, the 1%. It's in the fund policy. Is that being swept?
No. What's being swept is, or what's being proposed to be eliminated in '14 is the council contingency $100,000. It's separate from that room tax.
And where is that room tax? Because the room tax fund says it's city council money.
And that goes into council, I think it's non-city, or we've got the room tax allocation as a revenue item that goes into the city council's budget to fund certain things, and we've got a list of those.
I thought all those were getting swept.
No, no. So that is, let's see.
Well, she's looking at, my point is that we're a new council that has not been through the process of wanting to, you know, use money during the year for this or that as things come up. And so what I'm looking at is, and seniors very well may be one of those. And what I'm looking at is a few areas that I've identified where maybe it just should go into the city council budget. And so as the year goes on, the seven of us make discussions and decisions about, you know, this is a priority or this is where we'd like to go. So I've, you know, I respect if the body wants to just backfill the seniors and the people, the advocates have certainly been here on this $7,000, that's fine. But I was thinking if there's other allocations, maybe we could think about getting a little bit more money into the council budget so we could, as the year goes by, have some opportunities.
Yeah, I think, we kind of had this discussion previously too, particularly in light of what looks to be the elimination of the Neighborhood Advisory Board dollars, is to how might we still be able to fund some things in our neighborhoods and have some discretion with regards to that since those dollars are, appears as though they're going to go away. So I'm kind of with you on that. I agree that maybe we each should have some money in light of the NAB elimination of their funds, so I'm certainly supportive of that. But I also think Hillary's suggestion of these dollars being specifically allocated to seniors is right in that regard.
Then I'll, you know, just leave my comment on the table and ask the mayor to call for the vote on that motion.
Well, council, didn't you recommend we not vote?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. You can vote on having the line item budgetary moved for approval when you bring the budget back.
Okay.
The concern was actually taking action against disbanding the U.S. City Council.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Are we whacking the arts pretty good? I mean, it looks like we're taking a meat cleaver. No arts in public places and no cutting art down. One of the big events.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if I may, Kate Thomas from Office of Management and Budget. We are taking your meat cleaver to many areas of the city.
Oh, I understand that.
We are.
But the Arts Commission, we're not cutting. Now, what is the Arts Commission? Do they do a lot of backfill with the Art Town?
So the Arts Commission, the money allocated to the Arts Commission currently has a lot to do with Art Town. Some of the grants that they're offering actually do directly benefit Art Town. So that's the 182, I believe, thousand that goes towards the grants. These folks have gone through the formal process of applying for grants and they're pending approval of the budget. But a lot of those grants directly impact the arts community. So the proposals that you're seeing eliminated for fiscal '14 are the $10,000 for the Pioneer Center as well as the $25,000 for Art Town. The art in public places was something that we had reviewed and felt that previous monies that were allocated to that were not accurately reflected. And so that was a fiscal '13 thing, and we're not proposing carrying that forward in '14. And that's, it's not that we're cutting it, it's just that we're not proposing to bring that forward again. So the real cuts that you're looking at are to the $25,000 to Art Town and the $10,000 to Pioneer Center. Did you want to add to that?
For the record, Julie Conway.
For the record, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, Klinger. Kate is, Thomas is absolutely correct in her summary of what has been reduced and what is available. The Reno Arts and Culture Commission has retained its funding for project grants. Some of those assist in funding, and that is about $130,000. And those help to assist groups within the community that support Art Town and other kinds of agencies that, and nonprofits. So that is still there. And then we have other cultural grants, and those cultural grants especially help Art Town because those grants help to fund individual nonprofits that are Art Town, that are out there and support Art Town. So those grants are at the discretion of the Reno Arts and Culture Commission to come and recommend, they, the groups come and recommend how to use those funds, and then they make a recommendation to the city council, as you are well aware, on how those funds should be spent. And so those funds have been retained.
So if we took part of the Arts Commission, we'd be undermining Art Town anyway?
You would, in a regard, you would. Now, not all of those grants are used for Art Town, but there are quite a few of them that are used for Art Town and other groups within the community.
Well, and I'm not going, not going to fall over dead on this one, but I just don't, I don't want to see some event like we have with Art Town that brings a lot of people to town, spends a lot of money in our town, covers a lot of beds in our town, undermining where it's going to hurt them.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I can, I, sitting on the Art Town board, I can let you guys know that I know Art Town is hurting in terms of getting sponsorships. They're really relying on the city of Reno. I know return on investment, I think, as we all know, Art Town is pretty big, more of a local thing versus a regional where people come out and visit. I mean, we do have that, but as a local commodity for the city, for the region, that's something that we all look forward to. So, you know, but I understand also that the Arts Commission also tends to help out Art Town, but wanted to make sure that people informed about that, that they are looking for sponsors, they are, like everyone else, struggling. But I think that's definitely an asset for the community as we all look forward to July in terms of Art Town helping our city.
And I sit on the Arts and Culture Board, or I am their liaison as well. And it's certainly not easy, but it's clear to me, I didn't realize it before. I mean, I have a love for the arts, but not like this. And so it's clear to me how much they truly do bring to the table. And I think you're right, Mr. Mayor, that we really could see some pushback and also it can economically, I think, play a part in hurting, you know, the things that we want to portray as a city. I truly believe that. It was amazing to me, I was at Renown all last week, and have you seen the art in there?
Mm-hmm.
It is phenomenal. And there were people in there from all different parts of Nevada that were visiting family. And they were like, this is the most incredible hospital I've ever seen. And so, but they were saying, gosh, it really lifted our spirits and our mood and how cool that we have Art Town. And I just, I had heard so much feedback from people, and I think those are what really set our city apart.
I have a question. Can you bring that slide back up? The, the one with the Pioneer Center and... So, so the proposal, the art in public places is money that was never spent, so you're just not putting it in the budget going forward. So that's, that doesn't have, as I said, an impact on Art Town, and the Pioneer Center doesn't either. So we're talking about $25,000, correct?
Correct.
Has Art Town during the, during our fiscal fragility in the last few years during the budget, has it ever had any kind of a reduction in its funding?
It has not. And as you're aware, to balance this year's budget, we had to look under every stone, not to say at all that the city's not supportive of the arts. This was an area that we felt that for the one year, we could propose potentially reducing just for '14 by $25,000 to support for the art. We have an additional $16,000 out of special events that's going to support Art Town events. We felt that maybe that was a potential offset.
In looking at some of the line items for the budget, can, and I know I'm going to mix a little bit of apples and oranges here, but maybe not, can someone talk to me a little bit about the League of Cities and how much we pay to be a part of that and what the return on investment is for that sponsorship?
We pay $26,500 for our membership to the League of Cities. As far as return on investment, I'm going to defer to Cadence Matiavich to speak to that.
Good morning. For the record, Cadence Matiavich, Assistant City Manager. Our League of Cities membership does have certain benefits that come along with it. I think what's been most beneficial for us as a major municipality is the access to one or more of the five bill draft requests that the League of Cities obtains. And so, you know, I hate to say that our money buys us extra BDRs because that's not entirely the case, particularly since the Board of the League of Cities ultimately is the group that approves which BDRs the league is going to move forward. Certainly, access to information as to what's going on at the National League of Cities, that we, the city of Reno, used to be a member of the National League of Cities. We are no longer a member. That's one of our, one of our earliest budget-cutting measures back several years ago. And so the league, the Nevada League, remains a member, and so we get information on what's happening with programs on the national level. Certainly, an op- happening with programs on the national level. Certainly an opportunity to discuss with your colleagues from councils across the state, innovations that other local governments have brought forward in addressing issues that, that all municipalities are facing. I, I will say, and I believe we've had some conversations about this in prior years, right now, the way that the bylaws of the League are structured, every member has the same seat at the table, if you will, the same number of votes, even though the membership of the League is structured based, your contribution is based on population. And so the, the five urban cities really do contribute the bulk of the money and membership dues, but they do not represent the bulk of the seats on the Board.
I'd like to hear from the City Manager on this particular item.
Yeah, Cadence is, is correct in her assessment. I mean, I guess the question that you're asking is, is, is do we get a return on our investment for this? You know, I, I'm going to be frank, I, I'm not sure that we do, to be honest with you. I mean, part of what you get with the League of Cities is the lobbying effort in Carson. And I think with Cadence and her staff and our contract lobbyists, we certainly get a lot more for our money than we do. I think the disproportionate share of representation versus funding on the League Board. I think the League Board has a tendency to lean to the rural side, simply because they have more seats on the Board. So, but ultimately, it's, it's a council decision to make on, on whether or not the, the council, you know, it's a policy decision that the council has to make on whether or not you want to continue to be members of the League of City. Now, what the impact to the League of Cities would be if we pulled out, because we are one of the major contributors, I'm assuming it would be a fairly significant portion of their budget that they would lose if we pulled out.
Also, I mean, it does cut off our connections with the National League of Cities. And I think if we withdraw, personally, if we withdraw from it, how many counties are there now? How many cities? You might make about, how many cities?
I believe that there's 22-member cities that are, that are members of the League. There are also some general improvement districts and others that are members.
You might, you might end up irritating 21 other people that really don't care about what happens in Reno or Washoe County.
I, um, you know, I'm the, our director to the League, and, I mean, obviously, I haven't participated that much so far, but I have participated Municipal League in New Mexico when I was there. And, you know, I do find value in the organization. I, I really do. I'm inclined to, you know, say that we would keep the money in the budget as proposed, but I do think it's not unwarranted, and I think it's part of the plan, to look at our overall state legislative approach. I'm looking at it right now, and the, the Sun did a analysis on how much local governments are spending to lobby down in Carson City. And we've got, you know, we're definitely, you know, in scope of the other jurisdictions. Although Clark County doesn't have a lobbyist, they don't, they're zero dollars. But we have three-quarter time of an Assistant City Manager and a, you know, a, I don't know, Legislative Relations Person. So I would be inclined to look at what we commit to the League of Cities within the scope of all our other state legislative efforts, when we kind of do a, a postmortem of how the session went for us.
Clark County has several staff members that do their lobbying on a full-time basis. And it's more than the two people we have, or the group, well, it's a lot more than the two people we have representing them.
Yeah. No, I, I understand that.
And I wouldn't, and I wouldn't recommend us abandoning our lobbying efforts and relying on the League of Cities, because I, I don't...
Nope.
I don't, I, I just don't think that there's a whole lot of value in that.
If we do that, we might as well fold our town.
Right. And I, I, I kind of agree with the City Manager, and I'm not sure that we do get a great return for this, but I think maybe if, and I know we've done this in the past, is invited the, the President, CEO of the, of the League to come in and give a presentation to the council. And, you know, we can make a determination at that point in time on whether or not we want to continue to, to be a member or not.
I, I, I don't mind getting the report, but I think it's really silly on our part to talk about banning this ship, because if we, we need those, we might have good lobbyists, but we need those people's support when we're there. And I, I, I personally would be against any elimination at this point, but I would do, don't mind having a report given to us and bring us up a status of where they are.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to request that, particularly given that there's a new Executive Director for the League of Cities. They did just adopt a strategic plan for the League at their annual conference last year. And so I think we'll time it to give everybody a little breathing room after the session is over, but ask that that come back to you sometime later this summer for an update.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out, from, from a timing standpoint on the budget, we have the budget adoption hearing next week on the 21st. And so any decision on the League of Cities, if, if you wanted to make a change, would have to be made before then. Otherwise, we, we need some direction before the 21st.
Mr. Mayor, I think where we...
When does, when does that payment be made, though? I mean, just because we budgeted, when does that payment have to be made?
Mm-hmm. That's exactly where I was going, is, you know, I think for just the budget purposes today, we kind of switched over from arts into the League of Cities, and I understand why, that maybe that was a way to, to secure some dollars. But that's exactly where we should take this conversation, is leave that 26-5 in there. We obviously have some questions on that. Later in the year, if we find that there's action that we need to take, we can always reallocate. And so I would go back to the, the actual support for the arts. I think that the recommendation that we got from staff, given the severe times, or the, the impacts that our budget is still experiencing, I think that it is reasonable, but I want to see us do some things a little bit differently. For the Pioneer, you know, we used to be at that 40 level. We actually jumped up by 10,000 in about '03 or '04, when the center was having some really serious issues. They needed sidewalk, air conditioning, heating. I mean, it was really, really in desperate need, roof leakage and all of that kind of activity. They're not doing incredibly well financially either, but Willis and his team have done a phenomenal job at coming on top of, getting on top of some of those severe capital needs that they had at the time that we increased it. I'm sure this is not going to be easy for them, and as a matter of fact, they're hosts to quite a few of the art towns, since that's kind of where we've been centering some of our conversation. They are hosts to a lot of the art town activities, so we don't want to abandon them by any means. But for this, this fiscal year, I think that's reasonable. Where I think we have the opportunity to make some, some impact is at the commission level. Potentially, us having a, a meeting, lots of options that we could look at, having a meeting with them to kind of re, give some redirection to them, how we would like to see them, kind of some priorities that we would expect them to address in how they distribute the money. Potentially having that commission work with our Special Events Committee that we have here at the council level, and that the allocations be a joint effort between our Special Events Committee and that Arts Commission, and the grants that they give. That way, we would have council input into it as well. There are options that we can take a look at, and maybe one of them is that X percent of whatever they give needs to go to special events, or needs to go to art town in particular. I think there are some ways that we can design it, protect art town as, as we see, without trying to make those decisions in the budget process, leave that dollar array as it is, and just come in and be better managers of it. I agree, because I think they've spent some time, being on the Arts and Culture Board, they spend a lot of time, you know, coming up with different processes and things like that. And then they'll come back, and then we go, ah. So I think it would alleviate a lot of sort of time, and, you know, I think that's a very good suggestion.
Councilmember Zadra, if I may also add, it's not reflected here, but I would, in connecting with your, your line of thought, I would point out for the council that, as part of the new sponsorship program that the council's Special Event Subcommittee has approved, and your new allocations this year, that there are $16,000 in those special events sponsorships that come from the city manager's budget that are not reflected here, that are going to art town events as well. So there is additional support in other areas of the general fund.
I, I think Sharon's suggestion is a good one.
Excuse me, if I may, also, Julie Conway, for the record, Parks and Recreation Commu- Community, Community Director, I also wanted to mention that the Arts and Culture Commission also allocates $15,000 of its funds to the opening night sponsorship of art town. So as was mentioned by Cadence Matievich, there are other funds that are going towards art town in addition to the proposed funds that are up there. And your recommendation, we could follow up on that easily.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
Well, I was going to move on to a different topic.
Okay.
What, what do you need to add?
No.
Oh.
Leave it.
Motion?
We'll need a motion.
So if I may, council's direction is to leave the proposed funding for 13-14 as indicated here?
And I think we do, Ms. Zadra, we sit down with the Arts Commission, the liaison, and see where they are spending and doing, and encourage them to areas that this council has expressed that they would like to. And while we were talking about the League of Cities, I, we're not going to get into it right now, but I hope everybody will consider the League of Cities is a very vital part of our organization, because I really think we do get some benefit of having a relationship with the other city councilmen from other areas and stuff like that. Even though we pay more than some of the rural counties and all that stuff, I think we're playing with peanuts.
Well, I would, I think I agree with you, and I, I appreciate your perspective. Probably as a former Lieutenant Governor, you really recognize the role that the different cities and the coordination that they all have through that, so I agree with that, too.
And it, it's awful nice to have all of them kind of singing the same song when they go to Carson City, working together instead of us being the black sheep sitting on the outside. But anyway, I hope you'll think about it when we get to it. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, oh, no, no, my, my comment was, I thank you for filling me in a little bit on some background on the League of Cities. My thing was, when looking at the arts and its reduction, I, I guess my point was how we were going to ensure that we kept our robust arts, art town, as you mentioned, intact, because I, I think we've seen the effects of cutting a bit too much, particularly graffiti comes to mind first, that while we're trying to be fiscally very responsible, that cutting too far can have a negative impact.
Yep. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Kate, thanks for providing us all the fund policies. And I, I do understand that some are outdated and maybe need some revisions. But I, I wanted to ask, like, I, I looked at the forfeiture one that requires a budget to be prepared by the City Attorney and the Police Department. There's some provisions related to the risk management one, and, and I know I focused on that a lot last time, but, you know, this is a big dollar. We're talking about $25,000 for the League of Cities. And so it's, and I guess my question is, in adopting this budget with some changes, are there also other changes or actions that we have to do pursuant to the fund policy, even amendments right out the bat? And I guess one is that, when I read the self-funded medical funds policy, not the risk management one, it says that any transfer must be reported to the Department of Tax within 30 days. So that premium holiday, is that then trigger that reporting requirement, and you all know you have to do that?
Correct.
Okay. And then the risk management one...
If I might, if I might jump in, though, on, on the premium holiday, that's not a, it's not a transfer, because...
It's not a transfer.
The, the health fund is an internal service fund, and so we basically pay premiums into that fund.
Okay.
And so all we're doing is reducing the amount going into that fund.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I understand. Then the risk management says that prepare annually in conjunction with the budget process a history report detailing claims, losses, and expenses for each department, submitted to the actuary, which details claims ending the last 30 years, and, and, and E is the annual budget for the Self-Insurance Risk Retention Fund to the City Council for consideration and adoption. So, because we're making big changes to the risk management fund in terms of kind of transferring over to the general fund, right?
Well, the changes we're doing is an alignment process that we do annually. So we're looking at what the reserve levels are and what they should be, and making adjustments accordingly. And so, I mean, as far as the mechanics on how that occurs and what reporting mechanisms are necessary, I'll defer to the risk manager. But, but we are very aware of the fund policies and make great efforts to follow them. And so as far as that's concerned, it's, it's really a, it's an annual cleanup effort that we go through as far as aligning the reserve levels. So it's not...
And if I might jump in, too, I mean, the, the risk management fund is very similar to the health insurance fund, in that it's an internal service fund, and we pay premiums into it. So essentially, what we're doing, the same exact thing in that fund, is reducing the amount of premiums that are going into that fund based on where the reserve level is at today, and trying to put that reserve level at an, at what we believe is an optimum level.
Okay. And I guess what I'm saying is, you know, there is a reporting requirement to us for that. And, I mean, boy, I don't know risk management, but it does see that we sign off on something and look at it, maybe have a little more background, you know, at the same time we make this big change, you know, you know, would be helpful.
And, and I guess that's the portion of this I want to emphasize, is, is I don't see this as a big change, because this is, this is something as an organization that we, that we do every year, is look at the various funds, what are the levels of funds in, whether it's the health insurance fund, risk management fund, and what do we need to increase funds going into there? Because there, there will be years when those funds will draw below the optimum level, and we will have to actually increase...
Okay.
...funding into those. So I think it's, it's just part of our annual review process that goes along with the budget in setting the rates that essentially pay into those funds.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, what they're looking at, we provided all those reporting to our outside actuary for the last fiscal year. So they had all those numbers, and they came up with the amounts that were needed for the fund policy in coordination with OMB. So we, we provide a full analysis, but it's a year behind because they need a full fiscal year. So that's how the reporting occurs.
Okay, to the actuary, and then it goes to council after that. Okay.
One thing that we do need to do over the period of time, is we need to set a goal of where we're going to get with some of these, and start working on that. Because we should, we don't even have maybe a, what, a month's operating, two months, two weeks operating? We should be in the three-month category of getting an operation. So somewhere along the line, we've got to start increasing these. So at least, our first goal would be to get it a month, but really to be where we should be, we should have two to three months operating fees, so that we don't have to worry about it. Yes, Ms. Brackus?
I guess, you know, I mentioned that the council contingency fund is being swept down quite a bit. And I looked at a couple areas that I, I see some, you know, thoughts I'd like to propose to the body, is, first of all, the Sky Tavern. It's 65,000, I think, that we're budgeting, is that what it was?
It's right around that, 62.
Okay. You know, and I know that there, there are advocates and people who work on it. I've seen them come to the, you know, the Parks Commission. I was wondering, since we're going to have to have a discussion about it anyway in use of the grant, maybe that money gets into the council contingency for the time being. And, and my, my other one, I'll just run through these other ones, is the $50,000 for the traffic calming. I, I do believe that there's room for us to make a position at RTC for local roads for those sort of projects, or to put them in concert of other, you know, regional road efforts in those dis, road districts. So that's, that's a second one. And secondly, I'd rather see our traffic calming project be a part of our outgrowth of a, you know, kind of a comprehensive look of neighborhood needs, whether it's through neighborhood plans that we used to do and haven't done in the past, or, or something like that. And then the third one is, one of the items we did ask for was a detailed breakdown of the outside legal councils. And we received a memo on that. And I see in there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine outside legal councils. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven of... which were voted by a council majority of six-sevens vote. So, you know, to even issue those services, we had to have it come to our table. And so I would like to, I didn't get num, dollar numbers on that. I see that the city attorney's office has $2.6 million in services and outlays, and I, and I assume those nine contracts don't take all of that 2.6. But other than what's been encumbered, say for city bonds, because we're going out on a bond right now, and we ha, I know we have that attorney on, and we have a workman's comp issue that is still playing out. But other than what's been encumbered for outstanding issues, if these issues are, are done, and one I think is on contingency, the Goldman Sachs negotiation, then that budget amount put into the council budget, and so if a need comes out to hire outside counsel during the year, we hire the outside counsel by our six-sevens vote and commit funds from that pocket. And maybe, maybe we won't have that many legal needs arise, and we could use those for other things. Because really, spending money on outside counsel, that's not a, you know, I don't want to do that. We don't want to get ourselves in the situation. And maybe if each time that we do that, you know, it will be helpful for us to spend some time thinking about it. So anyway, I just, I think that could be some money that we could bring into our, our budget for the year to look at it more comprehensive.
Mr. Mayor, I'm-
Yes?
If I understood that, the first part of, of your thoughts, right, Ginny, is the Sky Tavern money would go to the council contingency because the recommendation was that that would be eliminated, correct?
Well, the, the city council's gonna have to make a decision about Sky Tavern this year, because there's a federal grant that's kind of rolling, you know, and we have to decide what to do. We might not have enough money, I understand, but it's coming to us in July. So rather than have that money hanging out into the Parks and Rec Department budget for Sky Tavern, what we're gonna do with Sky Tavern is unknown at this point. Let's put it in our budget for the time being.
Well, I, personally, I'd rather leave it there for the time being, until we're ready to move something. Because if we move it into ours, then all of a sudden, we're gonna wake up one morning and it won't be there. And you've got, you've got an awful lot of kids, and you've got a great group of people that are working with us. And so I, I don't think, I'm a little bit different than you, maybe.
And Mr. Mayor, that's where I was going.
I don't want a lot of contingency in this city council.
Correct.
Or any city council.
Right. That's where I was going.
I can always pull it from the, I can always, as a council, we can always pull it from legal or from the Parks Department, and they can't spend it without our approval anyway, so.
I think that it would be an, an error in our decision-making today, just on the budget, to pull the money from that project. I think it provides a critical service. And if things change, then, then we can reallocate that funding if that were to happen. But I think we need to keep it in here.
And if I can provide some clarification on that funding, it's in the capital improvement plan, and it is the money that we set aside, should we not decide to go forward with the Sky Tavern project, it's the money that we've already allocated or, or used from that federal grant so far, so that we have that in there as a payback, if you will, if the council so chooses not to move forward with that program. So it's not really project funding. The $62,000 is, is sitting in there awaiting council's direction in July. So that's, I just wanted to provide some clarification on what that money truly was.
Yeah, but they need that money in order to be able to operate. So, I mean, it plays a role in, in that program's operations. So that's, that's what I'm trying to describe. And I think we need to protect that. And in terms of the concern about not having money in the council contingency fund, I'm not as concerned about that, because we really haven't spent that over the last many years. I think that the last time I remember, and I could be in error, certainly, but the last time I remember as allocating any significant portion of that was toward the Blues Festival, when our prior city manager was getting that event up and going. And it has sat there untapped. We touched a, a portion of it this year for funding for some downtown activities with EDON, but that's it. It has sat there and untapped. And so I'm okay with us not having that one.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaste, Reno City Attorney's Office, on the outside legal, if I can provide some more background to you, obviously, it's his council's discretion to do the budget. However, outside legal, we worked closely with the office and management budget. We did have pockets throughout the city for paying legal costs throughout the various departments, and we reduced those pockets, so there's savings in those areas. And that's part of what's in this budget right now. So if there is a cost associated with the case, it's not a tort case, that would be your land use cases, the other cases that aren't in the risk fund, then if we needed an expert or we need an accountant, just like you needed an expert in other cases, like if you go forward with the fire case, that is not a tort case, it may require expert personnel. This is the pot of money that all comes from. Expert costs and legal fees are becoming very expensive, as this council knows. In our 1983 litigation, we're getting claims right now for attorney's fees that we fight, and we prevail on most of them, but they're ranging from $350 to $500 an hour. So, you know, if this pot isn't used, it's returned to the city council at the end, the general fund can use it. But I would caution you that if you don't have this money available and a legal need arises, then where would you find that money at, would be the thought. So I, it, it's within your discretion, but I wanted you to have a little nuances as to why this pot of money is, is sitting there.
Well, we have, we have a right to vote on it every time we spend it, so.
That is, if there's a minor cost that comes in under the authority of the city attorney or the city manager, it may not come to your, but any of the outside legal, we come to you, and you actually select that person, and you approve all of that. You're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor.
Let me, do you want to say something? Go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, I just want to make sure we don't restrict the council's or the city's ability to get outside expert opinion and counsel on issues that arise and stuff moves very quickly. I, I guess I liken it to when you have a, a serious heart condition, you, you seek out the best, and you want the representation from the best. And that's the same with the legal field. So I, I wouldn't want to restrict legal's ability to find the best in a particular area, to give the city the best representation possible on a particular issue.
I mean, through the six-sevens vote, we're sending them, they have to, we have to greenline it anyway. Let me, let me explain what I think the money, where we're deficient in some of the funds, is I see four, arguably five of these nine services related to redevelopment. We've talked a lot about what redevelopment is, and frankly, it's a debtor's agency right now. I'd like to maybe at some point see some ability to use some of these funds to maybe hire some professional services that maybe would be run through whoever the redevelopment staff person might be. And, and do the vision, do the plan, you know, start to be strategic. We're very big right now with the new Office of Engagement on strategic planning, and that's messaging and its participation. But I am afraid that we do not have the backup policy foundations to guide that messaging. And that is a big deficiency I see right now. And I think money saved from redevelopment, legal defense, could be money that could possibly be used in building and creating the vision and the policy framework under which we want everyone to operate with. So that's why I'm trying to, you know, put some money for us as we go forward on the year to think about doing some of this more stuff that's not following engagement and is not legal defense. And, and I'll bring in another point. At the hearing the other night, Councilmember Zadra, you mentioned the planning efforts, the, the Midtown, the Downtown, the, all the neighborhood plans. We really do have a need to get that planned area settled. And we've been trying to do it with staff, among all their other tasks, doing the Midtown plan, and it has not moved very far. So I think, you know, some of this planning effort can help us look at, you know, certainly the redevelopment agency, but also some of these planned areas, and then the whole goal of streamlining the development code and, and moving in that direction. So that's some of the areas. I mean, I mean, that's, because I think some of the thinking about contingency has always been for this event or that activity, but I think it really needs to be for a little more policy-related work, where we seem to be somewhat deficient.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Jack Campbell, on behalf of the Reno City Attorney's Office, as well as Risk Management. One thing that goes by that most people don't see is whenever we get sued in litigation, that inherently has a conflict or a potential conflict available that could cause us to have to immediately go get outside counsel. And, and specifically, anytime we have a civil rights litigation brought against us where they're going after one of our agencies as well as the, the personnel, that creates a conflict. And while we've managed those really well, each one of them has inherent conflict, where we could immediately be responsible for hiring outside legal counsel to represent one of the additional parties in the lawsuit. And at $250 to $500 an hour, we would go through that budget very quickly on just one complicated civil rights case if we get it filed against us. So please keep that in mind before you think about moving that money away.
Okay. All right, any other discussion about anything, anything you want to bring up?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Sheevy. Thank you. Since I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, I wanted to ask Chief Pitts a couple of questions on, on our traffic division.
Yes, ma'am, Steve Pitts, for the record, on behalf of the Reno Police Department.
How much was our traffic division cut since 2008?
They've been cut about 48%, almost 50%, ma'am.
Okay. And then, how much revenue did it generate in 2008, do you know?
I don't have those numbers with me today.
So I'm just trying to get a-
Can I find out kind of specifically what you're looking for, ma'am?
So I'd like to know what they generated in 2008, and now, what they generate now today.
Hillary, could, could we have you balance, chief, in your response to that 48% to 50% cut since 2008?
Yes, ma'am.
How much of that 48% was actually when we added in 2004, was it? We added 18 new officers, and the majority of them were to traffic?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we could balance that?
Yes, I'll get those numbers for you. And just for clarification, what I'll do is I'll, I'll break it down from eight to current date, and then number of citations issued, potential revenue generated, with actual revenue collected.
Perfect.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, there's sort of been this idea of kind of going around, and I'm just sort of curious, is, is there a possib, a possibility of traffic towing revenue?
There is. What, what we're doing with that, ma'am, is, it's not an idea, it's a program.
Okay.
And let me just generally, with Andrew's permission, kind of generally place it in the context for council, there's, it's a public safety program we're calling Sight to Tow. And what we're gonna do is focus on the highest risk violators in our community, and that's people that drive without driver's licenses, no insurance, they're under the influence of alcohol or narcotics, all right? Or there's reckless driving, or, or really speed racing, basically racer, people that are racing on our roadways. And, and with those, those, let's say, four categories, what we did is we crunched the numbers, obviously reported to, to Andrew monthly on where we're at with this program. We started taking a look at this based off of a Houston, Texas model about a year ago. And, and our program has matured to the point, we're working directly with Cassie and, and a couple of the judges in Muni Court, where we're ready, about ready for implementation. We were trying to shoot for May 1, but we're not gonna make it. I'm shooting now for July 1. But when you look at the numbers, when we take, let's say roughly 3,300 citations issued, the lowest, the lowest issued, let's say in the last four years, 3,300 roughly issued for those violations, the low end for potential revenue is about 2.1. Now, when you look back, and I don't have the numbers of people in traffic, specifically motors and traffic officers that do accident investigations, but if you go back to, to like nine and 10, I, I believe the numbers were roughly around 6,000, Cassie might be able to help me out, and that potential revenue generated was about 5.9. So what you have within that band with this proposal that we'll bring to you, the model's almost done, okay?
Wow.
Is the potential for 2.1 to about 5.9 to be collected within that program, so.
Wow, impressive. Let's see, what else? And so how many officers are, do, are we down since 2009?
91.
We're down 91 police officers?
91 police officers, 55 civilian and professional staff.
Okay. And then, I think Nauma touched on this at one point, but I know, so we're gonna bring back, how many is it, six, seven?
The council last week, you recommended, gave me permission to fill six vacancies.
Okay.
We're holding four within this process right now. The managers asked us to hold four. We're gonna apply for the cops grant, we're gonna apply for six positions there. We won't see that funding until about this time next year. And then if you were to look at a program like this, if we were to kick it off in July of this year, really my recommendation to staff that's working with me and the manager is to run the program for a year as a beta so we can analyze it.
Uh huh.
Because there's a lot of different moving parts to the program. We want to make sure that it's done absolutely legally, it adds value to the community, and if there's revenue that, that can be generated from it, it, it looks like it's gonna be fairly significant for us, we want to make sure that's analyzed. Houston's program has been sustainable for several years. So it's not like you start out and you have this big boom with revenue, and, and you're impacting at-risk drivers, and then within a couple of years, the, the program kind of dwindles. It, it looks like Houston's done it very effectively for years, so.
I think also the concern was, how are you replacing those officers that are retiring?
Well, unfortunately, ma'am, what we've had to do since '09 is to work very closely with the bargaining groups, the two bargaining groups on, on the sworn side in the organization to save jobs for people that were currently working. When we saw these cuts, we projected these cuts over the next couple of years. And so we've worked very closely in the organization to project those things, work with people for early retirement, or, or when they're ready to go a little bit earlier, and really save jobs for people that were working in the organization, if that makes sense. I mean, if, if, if you're looking at cutting the police department's budget by, let's say, three and a half, four million dollars, that's roughly 40 police positions. So to place it in the context, what we did is we worked very hard to project moving people out of the organization that were ready to retire, to save those young police officers' positions instead of, because we would lose those young police positions.
Is there a process in place where you, you continue every year to bring those back, or is it, because it seems like we're not really getting caught up. Does that make sense?
Oh, no, you're right. I mean, we've recommended, I believe it's in this budget in '14, that, that we, we get six extra positions on top of these 10 we're talking about today. But, but that, you know, apparently it's not gonna happen. So we look at Sight to Tow as an alternative. There's a second program, we're working with the courts on, very closely, and it's amnesty. We're gonna work on that program. I can't give you those numbers, I don't know if Mrs. Jackson can. I just know that she's really worked hard with us on both of these programs. And Sight to Tow is, is almost ready to, to, to go, so.
I'm just concerned, because it is a council priority. This is something that we talked about in our strategic planning group, that public safety was a big one for us. And having, I just get concerned when we're not continuing to bring back, you know, these officers, and now we're down, what did you say, 91?
Yes, ma'am, 91.
91, that's a lot. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Manager?
I just wanted to follow up, Councilwoman Sheevy, on your comments, because there was a discussion at one of the meetings, I can't remember if it was last week or, or the previous meeting, about the fact that public safety is obviously a top priority of this council, and that as positions became vacant in the police department beyond the four, that we would go ahead and fill those positions. And I think maybe that's, that's what you're looking at. And I think there was, you know, others that, that expressed the same concern, that we not hold more positions vacant as they become, as we see folks retire out of the police department, so.
That, that was the concern that was voiced, was the, being behind the eight ball to begin with, and then through attrition or, or what have you, those positions not being filled. And I know a, a large part of all of these discussions are contingent on the negotiations with all the contracts that are going on. So I know that that's going to have a very large impact on that. And to that point, I guess I would go to the one thing we can control, which is our own earnings. And I know there's been some discussions with regards to the automatic increase that we as a body, as we sit here today, don't have any control over not taking. So I, I certainly would like to propose that we, at the very least, give back the one point, I believe it's 7% increase, automatic increase, as well as the 1% PERS give back, which matches what we're asking others to do at a minimum. And if individual council members choose to do more beyond that, they can certainly do so. council members choose to do more beyond that, they can certainly do so, but I would propose that at a minimum.
And I would also like to add, would it be okay, Andrew, I guess this is a question to you, to take that money that we give back and allocate it towards something that we want specifically?
Yes, I mean, the council, if you want to do that collectively as a body, or if you want to do that individually as individual council members, you certainly can do that.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Mr. Manager, if I may add to this discussion, Kayden Smatievich, for the record, and I know that it's not something that you can act on today, but just want you to keep in mind that one of the provisions of the AB9, our charter bill, that did pass out of the Senate Committee unanimously on Friday, so it goes to the Senate floor for a vote. It was a minor amendment, so it will need to go back to the Assembly for a concurrence, but I'm expecting that to go to the governor in the next week or so here, ideally, that that does have a provision that would let each council member individually waive any portion of their salary or benefits that they want to in any budget year. So you may have significantly greater flexibility on an individual basis going forward when, I don't want to be too arrogant, but if in fact that charter bill moves forward, probably not going to work out from a timing standpoint before your budget adoption, but likely in enough time that you can put it into effect before the, before the fiscal year.
Great, that's, that's fantastic news.
Mr. Mayor, just, just wanted to add to the discussion here a little bit. There's really two ways for the council to give this back currently. Obviously, you can't, we cannot reduce the council's salary, that's going to go into play. So there's really two ways that council can contribute these funds back to the city. One would be to actually write a check back, and I know we've had council members do that in the past. Two would be to give up a portion of the allowances that council receives, that you can actually give up.
Can, can we get those forms so we can, and those are just submitted to payroll? Okay.
Figure out the dollar amount, what it is, and then people that say they're going to write checks, write a check for that dollar amount and make it out to a charity, and that way you can write it off.
It's to the community foundation, as in the past, right?
Yes, community foundation, that's a great one.
Yeah, that's what I've always done.
And Mr. Mayor, I will say, the administratively for us, the easiest way to do it is to, to offset it with those allowances that you're, that you're receiving.
So if I understand this right, we'll receive forms, you'll give us the number from what those percentages are that we're asking for to be deducted, and we, those would come right out of, right out of our payroll, so we wouldn't have to cut a check, is that what I'm saying?
It could, it could, if you have allowances that you're receiving, it could come out of those allowances.
Okay, but that would be done automatically, so that we wouldn't have to repay check, write a check.
But if you write the check to the foundation, you get a tax deduction with it. Take it out of your salary, you don't get a tax deduction.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you won't pay tax on it, if it does...
You're right.
So, so I guess my point was that we as a body recognize that everyone is taking or needs to take a little bit of a haircut, literally, in my case, and that we as a group will, I believe it's roughly 3% that we all agree that we will give back or have reduced in some fashion.
Individually we do that, we don't have to vote on anything, or?
No, it's individual. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
One last question, Mr. Mayor, you had actually brought it up at our last budget meeting. You had asked, Mr. Flansburgh, I believe, about the fleet of vehicles and if there was any opportunity to reduce the number of vehicles?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works. We, we actually have looked over the fleet prior to coming into this budget year and have made some reductions in that, in those fleet numbers. So, so we continue to do that. Our numbers are down considerably from where they were a few years ago. We are only minimally replacing vehicles. In fact, this next year, we're looking at only about five, five pieces of equipment to replace in the entire, in the entire fleet, with none of those being in the general fund budget.
So you're looking at each department and physically having somebody go out and look and see what they have. Don't just take numbers, but go out and see, because when I drive by some parks, places and stuff, and I see seven or eight pickup trucks and only one's gone or something like that, but really eyeball it.
We, we physically go out and touch, physically touch each vehicle each December.
It's good enough for me.
My last question is more procedurally, with regards to the critical labor shortage in those positions, in the event that a position is deemed no longer critically short, who, who can make that determination and that?
We do.
Is it the manager or the?
Tracy Chace, Reno City Attorney's Office. In NRS, it allows the council to establish the position as a critical labor shortage. You can do that every two years, and then you can extend it for two years. The, the NRS provision is still active. It does have a sunset provision, but usually in the legislative process, because a lot of critical shortage is used in the teaching area. They usually do renew it, so, but that being said, we'll, we'll see what the legislature does in that regard.
Are we allowed mid-cycle through the, to determine that we don't think the labor shortage exists any longer?
Tracy Chace, Reno City Attorney's Office. That, we send the information once city council designates that position for the period of time down to the state. I suppose you could determine that midterm if you chose to, because it's within your authority to determine in the, in the first place?
Okay. I just have a few last comments. My, my first is, I am uncomfortable that the code enforcement officer is funded through CDBG, whereas the, continues to be, whereas the person who works on all the federal funding and does the reporting has been shifted to the general fund. I don't think that's a good management practice. I think a better practice is to have the person who is working on all that stuff on that money. I think the nexus is much closer. And I'll, I'll continue, you know, I don't see support to take any of the $2.7 million that reside in the attorney's office for services, to, you know, put them with us to use when we allocate excess surface, you know, those services. But I will say that, you know, two of these nine on the list I did not know about until the last two weeks, so maybe we have a communication issue. One, I learned about last week when a member of the news media called me about this ongoing legal issue that I had never heard about. The other one I learned about that we had outside counsel working on when the widow of a former employee contacted us also. So it may be a communication issue. I mentioned before that we were represented at the Nevada Supreme Court last week on a case, for the second time that case is gone, and, and I've sat on the city council for six months, and I've never heard from our city attorney's office that we are, have an issue that could, as one of the justices say, reverse 7,000 acres that were annexed into our corporate boundaries. So, you know, maybe it is a communication one, so we understand more fully, or I can, as one member, where, you know, our legal activity is going, because the autonomy of that office is considerable as it is by charter, and it's not necessarily a bad process. But I think sometimes, you know, to have to find it through the budget process, or someone from the media calling you when you would have liked your council to stop, to brief you on something like that is probably...
And I think that what's happened in the past is some of, quite a bit of it has to be communication, I think, because all of the people that have been sitting here for five or six years kind of up to date on those, so they should bring y'all up to date on any of those that we have hanging out there and what we're doing. But all of the outside legal counsel always has been approved by the council when we've hired outside. Now, they have the right to hire certain outside, but the majority of them, I think they came before the council. But it, I think it's got a big communication factor to it, that it does anything. I don't think anybody's trying to hide anything from anybody. Okay, any other discussions? Any public comment? My favorite motion. Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.